Recording in progress.
Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock and let's go ahead and do a roll call. Clementine?
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
President.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. And Mayor Williamson.
Here. And then I'll pass it back to you Clementine so that you can give instruction for participation for public comments.
Yes, thanks. So for the safe attendance of our meetings, wearing a mask is recommended and encouraged. Please keep your phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference in the meeting. And there are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You can join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter meeting ID one six one three eight four 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 zero pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at Monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. And commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I'll call on each speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that is established for today's meeting and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Thank you Clementine. We'll go to the public appearance item number one, Wireless Ordinance, the second reading. And I'll pass it to Hans for introduction of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will hear again our staff presentation. We have tailored it towards the input that we received during the last council meeting. Councilmember Hafa also suggested that we bring forward a more neighborhood-centric presentation that basically shows how the neighborhood is protected, or the neighborhoods are protected through the existing proposed wireless ordinance. So with that, I know that Kim has about 10 minutes of presentation. And we also have our outside attorney on the Zoom call as well in case we have additional questions coming up. And then, of course, afterwards, we're looking forward hearing from the public. And with that, I think, Kim, are you ready? Yeah. There you go.
Thank. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I have a brief presentation to focus on the one question that was raised at the last meeting. In terms of background, the city council passed the first reading on February 7th of the proposed ordinance. And you were, you asked me to focus on how are residential neighborhoods protected by this ordinance? And first of all, I need to say that the preferred locations in our ordinance are clearly industrial districts and commercial districts. City-owned or controlled parcels in open space, all our residential districts, all our historic districts and our design overlay districts are where these facilities are not encouraged or allowed. Unless under federal law and standards, the wireless companies have the ability to provide an effective prohibition showing. This is the highest standard that government agencies can apply to considering applications. And basically what the wireless company has to prove is the facility has to be located in that district or in that area in order to provide service. So if they can't prove that, then the facility can be denied. So who will decide that for the city of Monterey? It will be at a noticed planning commission hearing, and it'll have to be based on substantial evidence. I do want to say that the recommendation, that the planning commission recommendation that came forward to you with the proposed setback was based on a three-two vote. And the dissenting votes were Commissioner Brassfield and Commissioner Dawson, who sat on our wireless subcommittee. And that was because they didn't agree with the setback requirement. So the key issue has been setback from residences and schools. And we've done a lot of mapping work. So basically, the issue that was discussed is from all residences and all schools having a buffer. This shows what a 25-foot buffer would eliminate large areas of the city. We looked at 50 feet, we looked at 100 feet, and there's large areas of the city that, where facilities would not be allowed without an effective prohibition showing. So one of the questions that was raised by a resident this week is what would happen if the setback did not apply to residential units and commercial areas? So we tried to limit it even more. And from my perspective, it doesn't change the maps that much. You would still primarily be allowed to put these facilities in commercial and industrial areas. But you see that areas of yellow still cover large portions of the city. And this is at 25 feet, 50 feet, 75 feet, and 100 feet. So just in conclusion, various mapping options demonstrate the large areas are limited from facilities with a setback from schools and residences. And that's our concern about the undue risk that puts the city in if a setback is incorporated into the ordinance. So in conclusion, staff has recommend you pass a second reading of the ordinance as originally adopted on February 7th. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Kim, for the presentation. Any questions from the council?
I don't have a question. I just, could you go back to the 25-foot and then the 100-foot again, please?
In commercial areas or just general? So here's 25 feet without residences in commercial areas. So you look at downtown and we have San Carlos School. You could put facilities in the downtown along Munrus and Cass in Lighthouse and Cannery Row on North Fremont Street and Ryan Ranch and a lot of Garden Road except where the preschools are.
Okay. And then 100-foot, please.
There's 50, 75, and 100.
Thank you.
While you're here, could you go back to the other maps that?
So what we start to see on these maps is we have random single-family houses and residential in the downtown. We have a few residences through this area. We have scattered residences through Cannery Row. As this, if we were to include this buffer with the proposed housing changes we're going to see through the regional housing needs allocation and ultimate construction. One of the issues the council will be considering is whether or not to densify these areas further with housing. So there would even be over time potentially a lot more yellow in this area in here. Maybe more yellow along Garden Road if we develop housing. And here out at Fort Ord potentially.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to ask him one more time to show the second slide and talk about this a little bit more.
This one?
No, the other one. So talk again why this is an important slide and what it means.
So it's important that our ordinance specifies for wireless companies where we want them to locate. And so we were telling them upfront. And so our ordinance clearly says that our preferred locations are in industrial and commercial districts. And the language is a little obtuse here, but what it says is parcels outside of open space districts, residential zoning districts, historic districts and design overlays. We don't really want those facilities in those special areas of our community.
So that's, that's an important part of the wireless ordinance to, to what Councilmember Hafa was pointing out last time. And what we, we were obligated to show you again is to emphasize that the preferred locations are industrial districts and commercial districts. And that the neighborhoods are the least preferred and therefore also protected in a way. So thank you.
So could you explain a little bit more about the process? So based on this, if a communications company wanted to put a small cell facility in a residential area or one of those, you know, non-preferred areas, they basically have to show there's a effective prohibition if they don't do that. What does that mean? And effectively, what does it mean in terms of what they have to do? Like, how hard would it be for them to meet that obligation?
So our ordinance actually has recommendations on types of things that we would like to see submitted, but you can't specify. You can make recommendations in your ordinance of what you would like to see as far as data provided, but you can't require it. So the company can submit whatever evidence they want to the city through the planning commission to establish that the regulation is preventing them to provide service. Some of the things that we've talked about through the long process is maybe you can have cell service, but downloading data is, there's not enough capacity to download it at appropriate speeds to provide the service that they need to provide. It also could be regarding a structural or a standard we have in our ordinance. Maybe we have, we have requirements about maximum distance from the utility pole because we want the facilities as closest possible to the utility pole. Maybe their equipment can't do that. And so they can say, you know, we can physically not provide our service because our particular types of equipment can't meet that specification and they would have to prove that. And I see, I don't know whether anyone else on our team has any additional information. Gail, I don't know if you had anything else you'd want to share.
Sure. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. I was just gonna expand a little bit. It's, it's a little bit difficult to answer the question precisely on what an applicant might have to show. Because what, what Kim showed you in, in the presentation was what the federal law says. So it says that basically you couldn't, as a local government, have a regulation or make a decision on a wireless application that would deny, would have the effect, would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless services. So personal wireless services are only the voice services for now. But the, the facilities that they use are used for what they call commingled services. So any antennas that they have will be, they might be providing data service, but they're also doing voice calls and things like that. So it's very, very hard to make a distinction, very rare that you'll get a application that is not for, to provide personal wireless services. So the, the federal law is, you know, that there's basically what we call an effective prohibition standard. But the courts and the FCC interpret that standard over time. And so that's why it, it's not recommended to have like very specific things that you would require to be shown. Because that would not, that would make your ordinance potentially violate whatever the, the judge made law standard is for what it is to show an effective prohibition at the time that an applicant is trying to make that claim. So you'll, you'll have, there are suggestions in the ordinance about the kinds of evidence the city would like to see in that instance. But it will really depend on the nature of the application and what the applicant is, is claiming is causing an effective prohibition. What about your regulations would, would cause that, that an effective prohibition of service if you were to deny their application based on your regulation?
Gail, thank you so much. So could you remind me? Am I remembering correctly that you did help draft one of these ordinances in a city that has a significant setback? Question number one. And then the related question would be, if that's true, and I, and I believe it is, how do you compare our ordinance, which takes a different strategy, you know, effectively disfavors citing small cell in residential areas and requires, puts the burden on the company to kind of prove there's an effective prohibition in order to do that? How do you compare our ordinance compared to one of those others in terms of how effectively they protect neighborhoods and the aesthetics of those neighborhoods?
So I, I will tell you, that's a great question. I will tell you that I have worked on many cities' ordinances. And I would say I have yet to come across a jurisdiction that isn't concerned about the exact same things that you are in terms of keeping wireless facilities out of residential neighborhoods. That's not where they typically have been in the past. It's only really with the introduction of small cells that you're seeing them, you know, starting to see wireless facilities show up on light poles and utility poles in the public right-of-way primarily. Sometimes you also see them in residential neighborhoods on like, say, a water tank site or a, in a park or in a church, steeple, those sorts of deployments. And this is an issue that many cities struggle with and take different approaches to, to address the concern. So I have seen cities to, you know, I've seen some cities that have just decided we, we're, you know, they're not going to worry about in the public right-of-way, they're gonna, so they're, they're just gonna focus on design and things like that. I have seen other cities where they have, you know, on a path, much like yours saying you're going to go into residential neighborhood, then you're going to have a very high standard to get in. And effective prohibition, as Kim mentioned, is about the highest standard you could require for a showing. And I have seen instances where cities have tried to put multiple layers of requirements on, and sometimes they end up in litigation over those requirements. And, and from, from the perspective of the wireless companies, just, you know, sometimes an ordinance may be adopted that looks very stringent, but the wireless companies are not really looking at that city at the moment. So it can sit on the books for years, but where it might potentially be challenged. In other cases, they're, they're very interested in deploying. And so there's a challenge almost right of way. Almost, you know, right, the, the first few decisions and you see a challenge. And that happened. I can give you one example because it's all in the public record was the city of Los Altos that had, I was advising at the time that they adopted an ordinance that had some very stringent requirements. And then they denied a couple of carriers' applications for facilities. And they ended up in litigation and later modified their ordinance to have more of a preference system and things like that. So there, you know, there, there are lots of different examples out there. I've seen, but I've seen many cities attempt in some form or another to restrict the deployments in, in the, in residential areas. And yours is certainly among the, the strongest in terms of requiring an effective prohibition showing to be in the residential area.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just follow up on that, there was a resolution that went around from several, and it came in from several residents through various neighborhood associations. And one of the elements of it was highlighting language in section 4E3V of the ordinance. So I don't have the package packet page number, but it's page, page, sorry, let me just navigate it there. Page 12 of the ordinance. And, and it says encouraged, but in the resolution, they're asking to change. And I think this kind of gets to the question that Alan was just asking. Asking to change encouraged and to instead make it mandatory that applicants provide the information. And they're saying to merely say that applicants are encouraged to do so allows applicants to simply ignore any and all of these provisions. Encouraging them does not give the city the necessary authority to insist on any of the information, even though all such information is entirely reasonable and relevant. The language reduces the city to a mere supplicant rather than a governing body, which is your proper role. So I'm just wondering if we can expand on that a little bit more in regards to our concerns there.
Was that directed at me? Sorry.
General to the team, whoever might feel like they're best suited to respond to that.
I, I'm happy to, to make a few comments about that. So I think what, what that, the important thing to remember, and that was in Kim's presentation, is that the planning commission, you know, as a matter of first instance, would have to decide based on substantial evidence. And so it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that, to make the showing that there is an effective prohibition. So if they just simply make the claim and don't provide evidence that shows it, then it's within the planning commission's authority to say you just haven't, you haven't proven your case, right? You haven't made the showing. And so, but if you, but if you were to, as I mentioned earlier, that the, the effective prohibition standard is sort of a fluid standard because it depends on how the courts decide things and what, what would be relevant evidence in a particular situation. So to require things to be produced that may not be relevant at all, I don't think would serve the city's interests and may just lead to, you know, litigation over whether the ordinance is, is lawful by asking for that information. So, so that's why, you know, we were careful to say, this is, this is the type of information that would, we would like them to provide, but we're not going to just mandate that every applicant making a claim of effective prohibition has to provide that information. But if they don't make the showing adequately, then it's within the purview of the planning commission to just say you didn't prove that it's an effective prohibition. So we're not going to accept that claim.
So what I hear you saying is that the planning commission will make the decision. And since we're saying that it's preferred that they provide it, that if they don't provide it, then the planning commission can make a finding saying that they don't support it because they didn't provide the relevant documents to, to validate their, their claim that they should be able to put a small cell wireless facility in a certain location.
Well, if they, they have, if they don't, they have to provide some evidence. They can't just say it and make it true, right? So they'll have to demonstrate in some way if they, if they think some of the, if an applicant thinks that some of the requirements on the list wouldn't be required of them for, to make their case, then they can make that argument. Right? And they can provide the evidence that they think they have to meet. One of the things right now is we have two different standards for what's an effective prohibition. There is the traditional Ninth Circuit standard for, that they developed from the beginning in the 1990s, 2000s that requires a significant, showing of a significant gap and least intrusive means and, and are the, you know, consideration of alternatives. And then there is this FCC order from 2018 that the Ninth Circuit also upheld that said in that, at least in certain circumstances related, at least a small wireless or 5G, that the, that they, that a carrier could make their showing in a different way. And that it would be looking at whether the local requirement creates a materially inhibits the provision of services. So there are two standards right now floating out there that arguably might apply in different circumstances. The small cell order very much directed to Uh, the small cell order very much directed to um, uh, effective prohibition showings if there's a, a small cell and the traditional Ninth Circuit um, uh, standard that related to macro facility. So, and there can be changes over time, because there could be more cases that come out or, or the FCC could reconsider uh, their orders and things like that. So um, I know it's kind of a long-winded way to say, it's not like they'd have to prove what's on the list, but they would have to demonstrate based on the application that is um, this, the application that is before the planning commission.
Okay, um, a few other questions. Um, I know one of the other elements that they spoke of um, in, in their demands is to include a fifteen hundred foot setback between wireless facilities. I know that the planning commission provided um, a two hundred and fifty, fifty foot setback. Um, and I'm just wondering if you can further speak to the concerns in regards to um, expanding that beyond the two fifty that was, was approved in the, in the planning commission's proposal?
I don't, uh, I'm gonna defer first to, to Kim, because I think it's sort of a mapping question in a way. Uh, it's a little bit of a technology uh, question as well in terms of uh, what um, you know, how the spacing required for facilities to fill in certain areas, but I don't know if Kim looked at.
So I, I'm gonna try and then um, if there's additional comments. Um, so staff has taken a very different approach between spacing of facilities versus setbacks to resident, you know, um, residences and all schools. And that's because setbacks to all residents and some schools eliminates large portions of the city just on the face of the ordinance. Um, so uh, we understand that setbacks between facilities is something that can be established. Um, and we are going to have multiple facilities or um, being deployed in the city. And there is an aesthetic concern between, you know, there is a, there's a, a real aesthetics. Um, you could regulate the, the setback between facilities. So we talked about that at the planning commission level. Um, you know, your average lot in Monterey, most of them are about fifty feet wide um, in most of our neighborhoods. Um, and even in our commercial district, you know, lots are about fifty feet wide. So it, they would be separated by about five lots typically. And the thought was this, that that aesthetically separated them enough to ensure that they weren't just jumbled pole after pole after pole. They were, there was some separation. On the carrier side, um, they argue or suggest um, that they would like um, restraints on that, that you could uh, if you have a setback requirement, that they, the next pole that they look at is within so many feet and that they would be allowed to be put, placed it on that pole. So um, and as you can imagine, you know, working in downtown or on um, I'd say, you know, in downtown or even our commercial districts, um, some people may not want these facilities directly in front of their business and location. So there will be discussion, well, you should put it one pole over. No, you should put it over here. Um, the one facility we do have in Canary Row, the property owner came forth and said, we just need you to put in a new pole here, because eventually we want to put in a driveway here. So there was some negotiation about where the best location for the pole would be. So the planning commission debated it. Um, the idea was that the aesthetic goals of the city would be achieved with a two hundred and fifty foot setback between facilities.
And would it create a problem if we expanded that beyond the two fifty?
Um, in terms of providing the service, it might. I don't know.
Okay, um, and then one of the other elements is uh, fall zones of a, a hundred and twenty percent of the height of the facility. Um, as I understand it, that, that's something that the CPUC regulates. Could you just clarify that for me?
I can, I can answer that in part. Uh, certainly if it's infrastructure in the public right of way. Uh, so the like communications and utility pole, electric infrastructure, those, that's all regulated by the, the CPUC. And, and what happens when, what typically happens if a, of a wireless facility is gonna go on a utility pole is that what they, what, well, what always happens is they, they have to do some testing and analysis to make sure that it meets the current uh, standards for safety, for safe infrastructure uh, deployment. So uh, typically it requires a replacement of the utility pole uh, just to, for wind loading and the weight and things like that. So uh, those tend to be some of the safest utility poles are the ones where they've had to do a, a replacement, because they're, they're doing an updated evaluation of the safety of the pole before they uh, will um, under the most current standards, before they would um, allow uh, wireless facility to go on. That's the, like the utility company.
So if I, if I understand correctly, um, we could have the setback, I'm sorry, the, the fall zone requirement, but it would require the utility company to replace the pole and have that.
No, sorry, I wasn't clear. The, I'm saying the standard, the CPUC regulates what is a safe uh, installations in uh, of communications and electric uh, infrastructure. So they, they have um, uh, requirements. It's general order ninety-five, it's a big, thick document that has all kinds of requirements for what safe spacing of, you know, between equipment and the pole strengths and wind loading and all those sorts of things. So within the public right of way, you wouldn't really be able to have, require something different. Um, uh, but outside the public right of way, uh, that, that would, you could, you could there. And I think that's how the ordinance addresses that issue, if I'm remembering.
Yeah, we, the, as most wireless facilities that are located, actually all wireless facilities located on private property, they submit a structural engineering report along with the um, the RF report for the radio frequency analysis. So our submittal requirements require both.
Okay, and then just one last question. Um, I've also been directed by some in, in the public to not pass an ordinance at all that doesn't meet what their expectations are. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to the implications if we don't pass anything?
I have some thoughts about that. Um, so if you, I, clearly it's a policy option not to pass the proposed ordinance. Um, the, we would be coming back to you fairly immediately with amendments to our current ordinance to address airport safety standards that we've learned about through this process. I think that would be an absolute minimum that we would need to propose in order to be in compliance with the Airport Land Use Commission's decision. And that, that requirement basically requires every applicant to submit the facility to the FAA. We're now getting certifications from the FAA. Um, so the FAA is tracking where these facilities are in the city of Monterey. So that would be an absolute minimum. Um, we won't have specific design standards for the public right of way. Or um, so the, this ordinance provides guidance on um, what those facilities should look like. They, it says that they should be located on existing poles. We shouldn't be generally trying not to put a new pole in. And the community at the, um, through the subcommittee process said, if you have a pole in front of your business or your house, you know, you, you have some expectation of that facility. But if a new, there was a whole aesthetic discussion, well, don't put them on existing poles, put them on a smaller pole across the street, separate from the electric utility poles. And that was denied uh, on a vote at the subcommittee level, because they said, well, that means somebody that doesn't currently have a pole in front of their business or house would get a pole. And that didn't seem fair. It seemed like more clutter to um, the subcommittee when they were debating it. So we wouldn't have design standards for the public right of way if this ordinance is not passed. Um, and I'll just, so what will we be measuring them against?
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the council, Ed?
Yeah, I think, thank you for your answers. I'd like to know just a little bit more to refresh my mind. I think the audience would, would particularly know. Thank you. Uh, I would like to know a little bit more from the get-go from an application timeline. So I think you covered part of that, and I just want to go over that again. So we have a shot clock that plays into this. And we have the application, and then it's either received, rejected, because it's incomplete. But eventually it gets on the timeline and the track. So is the first stop after staff's analysis to place it on the agenda before the planning commission?
So the sixty days starts its submittal application and is cumulative. So it's unlike any other planning application. So they submit it, we're trying to turn around those incomplete analysis within a day to a day and a half. Just, and once we give them an incomplete letter, that stops the shot clock. So let's say that takes two days. And then they resubmit again, and maybe that takes another two days. So now we're four days off of a sixty day shot clock. What's really um, challenging about our ordinance further is the planning commission meets the second and fourth um, Tuesday of the month. Were required, because the public wanted a use permit process. It's a ten day notice in advance of the public hearing. So let's say it's four, and then we have to get into that notice. It's usually at least about a week and a half. So that's about, you know, and then a ten day notice. So we're, we're already approaching, before we get to planning commission, about thirty days on the shot clock. And that's if everything lines up perfectly. Then um, the public was very concerned to retain their appeal rights. So the ordinance creates only a three day period to file an appeal. Most appeals have to be filed within ten days. But we have to then renotice with ten days in front of the city council. So, so ten and ten is twenty plus the incomplete letters. And if anything goes a little sideways in that process, it's very difficult to meet the processing timelines. And then there's one other complication. Uh, they are allowed at the same time that they submit to the planning office to submit to the building department. And as they submit and resubmit through the building permit, that counts towards our cumulative sixty days. So um, let's say they submit, the plan checker in building has to drop all their other projects. They have to jump to that project, and we're trying to turn those down around in two to three days. So if it's taking two or three days in the building department for the technical reviews, and then it's taking a day, day and a half for incomplete reviews, you can see, or I can see, there might be a scenario where we don't have enough time ultimately to process an application. And to date, we've been able to meet all those deadlines. Um, but I, you know, the, the wireless companies are very specific when they submit. It's a sixty-four oh nine application, you have sixty days to submit. We are submitting to the building department at the same time, and all of that is cumulatively counted.
Yes, I want to go back in some of the timeline. Thank you, and that's very helpful. So the notice goes to, because it's an application for a permit, the notice is going to who?
It goes to property owners within three hundred feet of all corners of the project site. Um, in addition, um, we post a notice onsite. So people that live in the neighborhood that may not be the property owner, or maybe you're walking by on the street and you shop at somewhere and you want to comment, there will be a posted notice onsite as well.
Okay, um, and was there any conversation in the wireless subcommittee in terms of expanding the areas of notice beyond three hundred feet?
There was, there was quite a bit of discussion. And for administrative processing, we wanted to keep, so we don't make errors. It's three hundred feet for variances, it's three hundred feet for use permits. And we're requiring a use permit for the wireless facility. So to make it consistent with all of that, we kept all our noticing at three hundred feet.
Okay, um, and so then, once it gets to the planning commission, and let's say the planning commission says rejected, and the, the application is rejected, what's the next move? And is the appeals board involved in this at all, or it goes directly to the city?
It'll come directly to the city council.
Okay, and as we all know, we can stop everything, and we can come in for a special meeting, even on a Monday night.
Yeah, and
And get that done.
That's foreseeable, that the planning commission and council are going to need to have special meetings um, for wireless. And, and we, we should um, add to that conversation that this is all optional. This is a policy choice to have this many built-in processes and notice requirements and appeals um, on all levels of application. None of that is required um, in telecommunications law. So those were policy choices made by the wireless subcommittee that we, that are implemented in the existing ordinance.
Yeah, um, right now, that's the only questions I had.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go ahead and start public comments. We'll do three minutes for everybody here, so.
Guess I'll go first?
Yep, go right ahead, sir.
Okay.
All right, is the mic on?
I don't know, testing.
You're good.
Okay, my name is Stephen Lucas. I sent an email before this meeting, so you can review that. It's a little more technical for your review. Um, can be posted according to Linda. Um, but I, I'm a former Navy intelligence specialist, worked for Admiral Johnson, Second Fleet Staff on the Mount Whitney. And we worked with um, electromagnetic field radiation and so forth. And um, a number of my coworkers and I are sick from it. And so I started looking into what's the problem here? What's going on? Is there any relation to this? And I'm trained in reconstruction, so I reconstructed my entire environment and figured out what was going on. First of all, I found this book, Biological Effects of Electromagnetic Fields by John M. Osipchek. If there wasn't a problem, this book wouldn't exist. There are a lot of government studies in here that were conducted after the US Embassy in Moscow was um, bombarded with microwave for sixteen years, from nineteen sixty to nineteen seventy-six. I'm concerned the city of Monterey is about to not only put one system like that up, but daisy chain it. The more you have, the more they overlap, the greater the chances of cancer. And the reason I say that is because not just me, the World Health Organization has declared these wireless devices as class two B carcinogens. So the city's in a tough spot. On one hand, we've got litigation from the cell companies, that's potential if these aren't approved. And then on the other hand, if you have cancer clusters in Monterey, they'll probably sue. So you're in a tight spot, I feel for you guys. Um, the history of electromagnetic fields is in this book, The Body Electric. So this guy goes up to nineteen eighty-five, and it's a really great read. It's by uh, Robert O. Becker. How it happens, because cancer is a result, right? There's a process. This book describes how people get cancer, particularly glioma, brain cancer. It's an octopus-looking tumor. It's Polymers and Electromagnetic Radiation by Wolf from Schnabel. Okay, and the last one I'll point out is the fourth phase of water, beyond solid, liquid, and vapor. The next step is gels. So what these systems do is they send out charged particles that produce gels in the body where there shouldn't be gel. It should be liquid. So these are problems. We aren't talking about that. We're talking about setbacks and residential and commercial and these other things. And it's all redirection away from the real problem. Now, I will say, as a carcinogen, you should compare carcinogen to carcinogen, right? Tobacco, we know is a carcinogen. If I lit up a cigarette in here and smoked it and pa- and blew smoke in your faces, he would pull me out. So um, let's compare that and not city to city and what cities have done. That's my point, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson, city council members, city staff, and residents. My name is Dr. John Adamo, and I've been given the opportunity to submit the petitions we have received thus far with over four hundred and fifty signatures and request that they be entered into the record to reinstate the planning commission setbacks. We, the petitioners of Monterey, urge our city council members to vote to reinstate the planning commission's recommended one hundred foot setbacks in residential zones and retain the requirements of the least intrusive And retain the requirements of the least intrusive alternatives. We, the petitioners, urge that the city council members should give the residents of Monterey a strong wireless ordinance in agreement. With our former mayor Robertson and council members Albert Hafa Smith Barrett, who formed the wireless committee and instructed those chosen. And the planning commission to create and recommend, quote, the strongest possible ordinance. Our current planning commission rightfully refused to recommend the staff ordinance version unless the hundred foot setbacks. Were placed in effect when homes and schools. However, the city staff recommended those setbacks be removed by the city council. Which they did by a forty one vote on February the seventh. Let me state this. It is completely legal to require setbacks with proven effective prohibition. As long as there's a waiver statement for the applicant to prove its necessity for a planned cell facility. You know, this boils down to that the wireless ordinance must be strongly in favor. Of the Monterey residents who live here. For the beautiful, for the beauty of our city and its neighborhood. For our protection rights, for our safety concerns, for our property values. Yes, for our health concerns and for decreased fire risk. It boils down to one statement that you guys didn't want to put in there, which your wireless committee recommended be put in there. And your planning commission be put in there, the one hundred foot setbacks, and that's what we insist you do. Thank you.
Mayor Williamson, city council members, Pat Benz, Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association Vice President. What the residents want is the one hundred foot setback that was approved by the planning commission. At the city council meeting last week, you all complimented the planning commission on their good work. And how they have to do the heavy lifting. That isn't only true with the housing issue. But it's true with reviewing any wireless application that will be coming into this city. It is the planning commission who said that it needs the hundred foot setbacks in order to do the heavy lifting. But so far, you are denying them. How can you one week say they are there to do the heavy lifting and then turn around and basically tell them that they are wrong? In the past, the planning commission has been our saviors of the neighborhood. They have listened to us and been able to use good judgment, even when the staff has recommended approval. Over the past few meetings, we have brought up more than the hundred foot setbacks recommended by the planning commission. That is because as we did our research, we saw that Miss Carish had included fifteen hundred between facilities and a hundred and ten. Percent fall zones for other cities. So we have let you know that those are backup possibilities. Once again, our main request all along is to follow the direction of the planning commission and leave the hundred foot setbacks. From homes and residentially zoned neighborhoods in the wireless ordinance. Past Mayor Clyde gladly signed the petition. In an email, Clyde said, when I first ran for council forty two years ago, I said. Residents are the experts in their neighborhoods and they should be heard before, not after a decision is made. I have not wavered from that. In an email from past council member Dan Albert, as I mentioned over the last several years, I do not support putting cell towers in our neighborhoods. The aesthetics for aesthetic and safety reasons. Council members Hoffa and Smith, you were both on the council when it mandated. To make at the strongest wireless ordinance possible. When the hundred foot setback is left out. And staff and legal counsel hang their hats on encourage an applicant to prove effective prohibition, you are not following through with that mandate. Mayor Williamson. I just hope you do what's right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ray Myers, resident in Monterey. If you vote to add back the hundred foot setback to the wireless ordinance and the planning department required, it will restrict the wireless companies from placing ugly and out of character microwave broadcast antennas. And radios directly in front of houses. That does not mean the hundred foot setback requirement and the ordinance by itself would amount to an effective prohibition. Many least intrusive alternatives will exist to satisfy personal communication service. Much is being made by the telecommunication industry about the merits of the new fifth generation of cellular standards. But the basic misconception is that this new technology will only work when cell towers are located in close proximity to homes. It's factually untrue. Five G is already being offered in Monterey now. T-Mobile, for example, accomplishes this by way of a low and a mid band microwave's frequency. And their macro facilities are outside of residential zones. Intensified antenna systems for five G sites are really about selling fixed wireless internet services to homes and businesses. They're not about improving your cell service. Mobile wire carriers have spent millions of dollars touting the benefits of five G over the past several years. Their bragging right makes it easy to forget that most devices spend most of their time connected to your wifi system. This is true of your smartphones and of course, it's absolutely true of your personal computer. It should also be known that there are alternatives to five G cellular broadcast for internet. Fiber optic systems are now available on much of Monterey. If one brings a fiber optic cable into their home and connects it to the new modern wifi modem routers. So called wifi six, it would be far superior to five G cellular and security, speed, reliability, and without the aesthetic sacrifice of our neighborhood. Wifi six can produce speeds up to ten times faster than five G cellular and broadcasts it in a very small distance, usually within your own property. So if your phones, your cellular and your landline computers are linked to their home wifi six. And then plug or plug directly in with an ethernet cable, why do you need cellular for internet and cell phones? Well, you still need mobility. You need to be able to connect while in your vehicles or walking around the neighborhoods. But do we need antennas every two hundred and fifty feet on utility poles next to residents to achieve this mobility? Please don't believe that's red herring argument that we cannot stop progress or improvements technology for our city, because everyone's in favor of improving technology. We need to be able to say no when the technology impinges on our city's character. Or in some cases, it's just to improve a company's bottom line. Please vote no to put in and place a hundred foot setbacks in the wireless ordinance before it's too late and we flood our. With ugly unnecessary cell antennas next to our house, so a telecom industry can sell us an inferior service that we do not want or need. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson and city council members. My name is Marty Krafcheck. I would like to thank Dr. Barber for understanding residents' serious concerns regarding the current cell tower ordinance and for her vote of support. Many residents have spoken passionately in favor of Monterey providing the strongest possible cell tower ordinance for our city. Sadly, our concerns about this ordinance were not shared by the rest of you. I was saddened and disillusioned when I listened to the State of the City address and understood Mayor Williamson's position was to. Favor expanded access for the telecom industry. This, despite his acknowledgement that the city for generations has protected and respected the importance of its nature and surroundings. I, for one, and many of my neighbors voted for representatives that we expected would continue to protect and improve our quality of life for all generations. Not to diminish it. Our neighborhoods are asking you, our elected representatives, to support us and not dismiss our concerns. Why would you not want to put forth the strongest ordinance legally possible? Why would you not want to protect the citizens of Monterey and the aesthetics of our historic city? We are simply asking that you reinstate a single sentence that was recommended by our planning commission to be included in this ordinance. A one hundred foot setback from schools and residences must be required and any relief granted from showing effective prohibition must be the least intrusive. As residents of Monterey, we want to feel confident that our elected officials support us and have our back. Show us strong leadership, not fear. Vote with your constituents instead of against us. Please carefully consider your vote tonight as your actions will define you and this council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tony Tauner. I live here in Monterey. I've got a prepared statement, but I I'm struck by over all the hearings that I've attended here. I've never heard one person say that they didn't have great cell service here in town. So it's not as though anybody's asking for additional services. And I agree with the speaker a couple of times ago who said. This is really about the cell companies trying to sell us more stuff. I'm here to tell you how disappointed I am with your decision to approve the watered down cell tower ordinance without the requested one hundred foot setback. That being said, I'd like to thank Dr. Barber for having the courage to vote no on this important issue. At the city council meeting on February twenty first, city manager Uslar said that, quote, the planning commission is the group that's going to help us figure this out. Referring to the housing crisis facing the city that was being discussed that evening. Hopefully, the planning commission will have better luck getting staff to listen to them on that topic. Than they did with their excellent work on the cell tower ordinances which staff ignored. Several years ago, and I guess again last month. These chambers were packed with citizen residents speaking almost exclusively against cell towers. And last month insisting that the city adopt an ordinance that best protects our neighborhoods and the beautiful nature of our city. You ignored us. We voted every one of you into office and our taxes pay the salaries of the staff working on this issue. All the while believing that you would do your part to preserve the beauty and quality of life that we enjoy here in Monterey. You didn't and you let us down. In my judgment, you took the easy, politically expedient route instead of standing up for your constituents. I hope you'll reconsider your decision. Listen to the citizens of Monterey and adopt what the planning commission called, quote, the strongest possible ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for all your time tonight. Barry Perkins on Via Ventura. Twenty nine years ago, we moved there. Based on the proximity to Monte Vista School, my son was born a month later. I think had there been cell towers in the neighborhood, then with unknown impacts and exposures to people, we might have reconsidered. Aesthetically, I think back when we moved in, it was the most athletic ninja squirrel that would be able to walk the wire between poles. Then we did fiber optics, data cables. We've got these black conduits that run from pole to pole at a lower level. That are so heavy and so thick that the most geriatric squirrel can now walk across from each pole. It's a visual blight on our neighborhoods. My father in law moved here like. Sometime after all that was installed and he he made the comment, oh, you guys have a lot hanging from your. Your poles. There's there's a lot of clutter here. And I thought back to when the business district on Lighthouse got to undergrounding and how that improved everyone's state of mind on that street. So I urge you to consider the maximum restrictions possible for the setbacks. Listen to your constituents. Please, as a cancer survivor from industrial exposure, I'm learning to live with new deficits in my life. It's not easy. When I built my driveway and stairs to the street level, Via Ventura is very rural. It's got a downhill to the canyon, no neighbors in the back. We've got a beautiful green belt. I had to get an encroachment permit to cross the the public right of way to get to the street. Well, let's reinstate that going the other way. If you're putting something in the right of way that encroaches on me. I eun shielded radiation. You know, let's let's get an encroachment permit and let the residents decide who gets to encroach on their space. Also, are we not treating this like teenagers and vaping? We don't know what the long term effects are. Basically, the neighborhood is becoming a teenager if you allow this and the cell tower is the e-cigarette. And we don't know. And if we're telling our kids that same. Argument that, hey, this is a long term effect, it could. That we don't know about, that it could impact you in the long haul. Please don't do this right now. Why are we? So comfortable adopting the opposite argument. To get these that we don't know the outcome from. So I urge you to slow it down. Get some more facts. And if you have to do it. Make it as restrictive as you can. But that's what I would really support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Martin. Come from a family with a couple of generations of Martins here. We've been showing up here and supporting the community point of view. For six years now. We won this pretty handily back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen and. The motion was defeated. It's coming back again. There are probably some people in the in the big. Tech industry that that are trying to push it through. And we have counted on our city council to support our point of view, as was mentioned earlier. This is the heritage of Monterey is at stake. We we're known, we're not like any other city. We're known to be have special. History and going back to the first theater and of course, before that. And we we don't want to give up the beauty or the safety of our homes that we live in. We don't want to have something like this be passed just so. That that is going to. Have our property taxes. Not not really cover. The 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 values of the property that we bought. And so this is a town that has. More festivals and more community gatherings than I've seen anywhere else for the size. And that goes back to. With the pioneers of this this town that that bring interest, you know, John Steinbeck and Doc Ricketts and. And even Clint Eastwood and and the AT&amp;T tournaments and all of those things that bring tourists to us. If you want to throw that out the window, this is the way you're going to do that. I encourage everybody here to take this as far as we need to. Media. The legal, the legal avenue and and rallies with all the people, okay, where we will get media attention. We'll bring the attention to what we think is happening here. Previous administrations did not even consider this. And if you're going to vote behind closed doors, we want you to vote with us. Okay, we don't want to just hear, you know, the the numbers out of the five people. So I thank you for listening and I trust that we will all continue to to do everything that we need to do. To to stop this. Thank you.
Why don't we have the next person come while he's getting set up, sir?
My name's Robert Feist and I'm a resident of the Monte Vista neighborhood. And as you know, last time this came around in twenty eighteen, it was quite a debacle. The sites had been cited. We knew where these cellphone towers were going to go and homes were targeted. And I met a lot of these people in these homes. One of them was my next door neighbor. And he was extremely upset about it. Another was a young couple who had inherited the house from their grandparents. She was pregnant with their first child and. Maybe the health issues surrounding this are ambiguous. We don't know what's going to happen. But I'll tell you what wasn't ambiguous, and that was the fear in that woman's eyes, knowing that she's going to raise her child with a cellphone tower. Right outside her door and every day was going to be looking at that thing. And so I just really wanted to come up here. And so I just really wanted to come up here and talk about what this really does, how this really impacts people when these are cited and you know, and what these people go through, they're terrorized. And I, I just, if this hundred foot setback is going to help them and give them a tool to keep this from happening and let them enjoy their home that they've worked so hard for, then that's got to be the right solution or something that will just help the residents protect themselves. Thank you.
It's been two years and I still can't speak comfortably with one of these on. My name is Robert Goei. I live on the old stone house on Euclid Avenue. And I'm addressing this as a very real problem to me. About 12 years ago, I was severely injured. I had to have my right bicep muscle reattached. My right shoulder was severely damaged, my neck, my left shoulder, my wrist. They had to surgically amputate my bicep muscle to reattach it because it was so torn. When they put it back together and I finally got out of a cast three months later, I found I'd lost all fine motor control on my fingers. And the doctor said, oh, don't worry, the nerves will grow back. And I said, how fast? About an inch a year. That means when I'm 79 or 80, I'll have fine motor control with my fingers back. I had to sort pennies on a table for a year. After COVID stopped, my wife and I loved to hike Point Sur. We went there last summer. We've been there like every year for the past 10 or 12 years and we hiked up the backside. It's really steep. You go on a tour of the lighthouse, you step on the top and then they take you up the stairs. And then you go to the gift house where you pay your $10 for the tour. I walked into the gift house, the gift store to pay my $10 and my right arm started to light up. And my bicep muscle was reattached here. I'm missing the tendon, I'm missing cartilage, I have bone on bone, I have a lot of muscle damage and nerve damage. And while I was standing at the cash register, my right arm started light up. I thought I'd gotten burns or maybe a tick was in my sleeve. I stepped outside to take my shirt off and it got worse. Well, needless to say, I thought maybe, you know, I bit by a bug or something. We were up on top of Point Sur for about 20 minutes. And as we were leaving, the guide said, oh, hey, see that big water tower up there? After the fires, AT&amp;T came in and put a cellphone tower in there. Well, after my recovery, I was on Vicodin and about 10 tablets a day. In two years of that, you really get tired of it. I went on a pain withdrawal program. Took me two years. The doctor in the pain management class said, don't go near cellphone towers or high capacity lateral transmission lines. Don't go within a football field length. That's about 300 feet. Well, I got down to the bottom of the Point Sur and my arm was just going nuts. That night, I had to put hot compresses, ice cold bags on my arm. It really flared up. My shoulder flared up, my neck locked up on me. I was in pain hell for three days. I never expected to go through this. I thought, hey, I'm really careful. I inadvertently walked within this not safe distance of a cellphone tower. It took me a week to recover. I dropped things for all summer. I really think that that electrical current probably fried where my nerves are grown down to here because my hand has not gotten better in the past year. So I'm telling you, the staff report did not take a look at how many people in Monterey might be affected by this. There are a lot more people like me out there. So please do a standoff distance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristen Dodger. My family strongly supports the letter sent by the Neighborhood Association asking to keep the planning commission recommended 100 foot setbacks clause and to have it pertain to homes within residential zones in order to maintain aesthetic standards. 100 feet is really modest. And when most residents really want 500 or 1,000 foot setbacks, 100 feet would be a reasonable compromise. The setbacks need not apply in multi-use or commercial zones should you add appropriate wording. These zones were included in the map of Monterey that staff showed at, I think it was an earlier meeting. But those, those are the preferred areas for wireless facility placement anyway. So the map was a little misleading and created an incorrect perception that setbacks cause an effective prohibition in and of themselves. As some of the residents among us are former and current attorneys. They've pointed out many times that effective prohibition happens on a case by case basis. So the ordinance back in 2008 is pretty similar to the current ordinance in this regard because both of them recommend, both of them have had disfavored residential placement in them. And that alone did not work for us in 2018. Because, well, you've heard that whole story. So we need setbacks from homes. Adding an additional layer of standards within residential districts is exactly how we would make this ordinance stronger. Thank you.
I'm Shries Carlyle, Monterey resident, Mayor Williamson, city council, city staff. I also agree with over 450 residents that signed the petition so far and with the neighbors here. And we urge you to reinstate the 100 foot setbacks in residential zones that your planning commissioners recommended. Of the residents we spoke to, it was a landslide of those who were glad to sign to reinstate the 100 foot setbacks. We would have obtained many more signatures if it not had been for bad weather and many people were not home. The residence understands the setbacks are legal coupled with prove effective prohibition and with an additional waiver statement for the applicant to prove them necessary and with the least intrusive means. Malibu and Calabasas and other cities have this stronger double protection for the residents in their current wireless ordinance with much larger setbacks. We actually find it disturbing that you would want to remove the very reasonable and legal 100 foot setbacks your residents are insisting upon. No setbacks at all, we believe, will encourage the placement of numerous cell facilities throughout our neighborhoods, ruining the aesthetics. And in a natural disaster or a fire, a facility could fall on an occupied structure. You as city leaders are supposed to extend maximum protection to your residents that you represent. So please, we urge you to reinstate the mandatory 100 foot setbacks that your planning commissioners recommended from homes, dwelling units in residential zones for our safety, our health, to decrease fire risk for aesthetics and to preserve the beautiful, natural and vulnerable environment of Monterey as global warming problems continues to increase. Unrestricted cell facilities in our neighborhoods will threaten our safety. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate everybody being here and my, my name is Charles Martin. I showed up here 71 years ago and enjoyed incredible life here in this beautiful setting and I think, I wonder if we're not missing the forest for the trees here. We are in a risk situation and it's not just a legal risk. It's a complexity of risks that we have. We risk aesthetics, we risk tarnishing this beautiful, attractive tourist destination. We risk the support to our hospitality industry. We risk conference center business. A lot of businesses send, have their conferences here as a perk because it's beautiful. And we can't be hypocritical and say we, we are encouraging this and we're doing this and have mundane cell tower lollipops throughout our neighborhood. They, that's just so much BS. We can't do that. And people are aware of that and are more aware as they go. We should inspire people to who come for the beauty to take that and go to their communities and improve their communities as well. And in so doing, we have a trajectory into the future that's much more promising and stable than just making mundane decisions. So we're in risk. Let's look at all the risks. I mean, we have a risk to people's properties, their values. It's a real risk. It could be anybody in here who lives in Monterey. It could be me, they just randomly pick a pole as far as we're told. We risk alienating the electorate, the people in our communities. You can alienate that, that's a delicate thing as well. We risk future generations. We risk alienating planning commission, right? Also risk alienating staff. I understand that. But honestly, I really think that we have a higher estimation of you to solve these problems that may come up. If there is a challenge, honestly, if there's a challenge, you can change the ordinance later. You can't put it back in if it's not there. You can change it. And it would be staff helping and, and the planning commission and all of you, your dedication, your intelligence, your groundedness in understanding the reality of all the factors that make Monterey function. And Monterey does need the revenues just for its own paying of bills. Okay, and I encourage you not to do a 180 of all the, the heritage and lineage of this process.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Williamson, city council members and city staff. My name is Catherine Adamo. I'm a Monterey resident. I was one going door to door with petition to reinstate the 100 foot setback that our planning commissioners recommended. The overwhelming majority of the residents of Monterey that I spoke to at the door told me they did not want these cell facilities near their homes. I could have collected a lot more. I could have collected a lot more signatures if it wasn't raining and if it wasn't cold. Okay? The residents are aware that it is illegal to couple the setbacks with proven effective prohibition as long as there is a waiver statement for the applicant and with the least intrusive measure to do so. So please, we urge you to reconsider and reinstate the important 100 foot setback from homes and dwelling units in residential zones. Thank you.
Rafael Ramos, I live on Via de Sconso. I think that you've approved this new ordinance because you feel legally constrained to do so. And the lawyers from the cell tower industry are trying to frighten you into compliance. I believe that you do have an opportunity legally to fight this constraint. The mayor Williamson pointed out that the planning commission perhaps gave insufficient findings or reasons for their decision. The purpose of the law is to give high velocity, high speed internet to as many citizens as possible. And so you have to focus on that. Giving citizens high speed internet. If you do that, then you look at the environmental law, which is that there are alternatives to the cell towers and the alternative is the fiber optics. So that you could find that the less environmentally impactful way to bring high speed internet would be to have fiber optic in the residential neighborhoods. I think you should really develop this concept, really develop a case. And I think that you have a possibility of winning it. Your citizens definitely want the least impactful environmental outcome. I walked down the street today and every person who answered the door was willing to sign the petition that was presented to you. And so you know how your citizens feel. And so take the chance, don't be scared into compliance. Think this through. Develop a strategy so that you can find the environmental law and this new law in conflict. And what you're trying to do is to meet the goal of the law, which requires the cell towers, which is to provide high speed internet. And that's what you're doing. If even
You can finish your statement.
Mayor, city council, my name is Jeannie Farrar. I am a resident of Monterey Vista neighborhood. And this is the 800 pages of citizen opposition to the 13 cell towers in 2018. 800 pages. And now you want to give carte blanche to the telecom communications, I mean, the telecom corporations to install hundreds of towers with zero setbacks from our homes? What's wrong with this picture? After personally collecting 175 of the over 450 signatures from Monterey residents in the past two weeks, I can testify that 98% are absolutely against cell towers in residential neighborhoods. And especially if they're located in the public rights of way in front of their homes. Not a single person knew anything about the city council voting four to one to allow cell towers every 250 feet with zero setbacks from their homes. They thanked me for knocking on their doors and making them aware. As a real estate agent, it's my fiduciary duty to protect the people I represent. The National Association of Realtors found that 79% of those surveyed said that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower. And property values can decrease up to 20% depending on how close a cell tower is from the property lines. Will you, the city council, be liable to Monterey homeowners for any loss of property values? Will you be liable to the local real estate industry for their losses? Because if you pass this weak ordinance recommended by the city staff, you will be responsible for not protecting the property owners who just elected you. You must reinstate the planning commission's 100 foot setbacks from homes. And any relief granted from showing effective prohibition must be the least intrusive. Other California cities have much stronger wireless ordinances and Monterey deserves the same. The United States, United Kingdom, Canada, France, Germany, Italy, Japan, India, Australia, New Zealand and other countries have banned Chinese made 5G technology because of national security concerns. This means that 5G cell towers, no matter who makes them, are capable of surveillance, collecting our data and collecting intellectual property and other gross legal privacy offenses. The, the organizational chart of Monterey shows that the citizens are at the very top of the chart above the city council. The city council is beholden to the citizens and clearly the citizens do not want cell towers near their homes. the citizens do not want cell towers near their homes. So please, vote no tonight to give us a wireless ordinance that reflects the same safety precautions given to Malibu and other California cities. The citizens of Monterey deserve it and the voters demand it. Thank you, Dr. Barber, for your courage and wisdom to vote no in the city council meeting on February 7th. I applaud you.
Rob Thompson, I live up on Villa Del Rey and have two daughters, 10-year-old daughter, five-year-old daughter, adorable dog, wonderful wife. And we want to be here, we want to be here long-term. And the thought of these towers going potentially into our neighborhoods is a frightening thing, especially when there's so many unknowns. We, if anybody says that they know what the long-term effects of this type of technology is, they, they're, they're full, they're full of it because they don't know. Nobody really knows. 30, 50 years down the road, maybe we'll have a better understanding. But I really appreciated the first presenter that had the books. And I think, I feel that should be required reading for whoever's making decisions here. I think you need to take your time, really study this, thoroughly analyze it because we don't want to just be making rash decisions in order to satisfy the telecom companies and the pressure that they might be putting on you when it could have serious long-term, you know, consequences as far as our health. And I don't think, I have a feeling that, I mean, I definitely wouldn't want one of these towers within 100 feet of my house. I wouldn't, I don't want one within 1,000 feet of my house. So 100 feet to me is not adequate. I know a lot of people in here are like just 100 feet. They seem to be cool that, I'm not cool that. So, and I don't think you guys would like one of these towers outside of your house. And, and you know, maybe you would, I don't want to speak for you, but I have a feeling that deep inside, many of you would not be very comfortable having one of these towers outside your house. So I encourage you to do the right thing and appreciate your time. I appreciate you taking a stance that differed from the rest of your colleagues. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Daniel Daughter, Monterey resident. I just want to quickly add to the aesthetics angle to this and the beauty of Monterey, what we have right now. And what we could have. Mary mentioned earlier about our overloaded poles and all, all the equipment that hangs and sometimes blows over in a storm. We shouldn't just want to protect the beauty that we have. We should adopt policies and foster a more beautiful city than what we have. So I support undergrounding the equipment that is on these overloaded poles. And I support the planning commission's draft with the 100-foot setbacks. Thank you very much.
Hello, thank you everybody for being here tonight. My name is Holly Heimer. I'm a business owner on Casa Verde Street in Monterey. I've lived here for 30 years. I'm not understanding why there seems to be difficulty in respecting this 100-foot setback. I'm wondering why, why are we not asking for 5,000 feet in between, for 5,000 feet in between each of these cell towers, 250 feet every five houses? And I'm hearing that there's adequate coverage for cell communication. I don't understand why we want to litter our beautiful community with cell towers with unknown consequences. And at least 100-foot setback seems minimal and I hope that the city of Monterey is respectful towards the citizens and our children and keep our city healthy and a happy place to grow up. Thank you for listening and thank you for voting no.
Good evening, staff and mayor and any commission. I might have all the details, but I'm concerned and listening to all this with the setback between poles and adequate usage. How can some cities put the poles 1,000 feet apart and everything's fine? And we had to put them 250 feet apart or 500 feet apart? So if anybody can answer that question, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor Consulman, Tony Flores, I live up in the neighborhood as well. Been in Monterey for 44 years. You guys heard me before, spent most of my life in the telecom sector. And I was a pioneer in the telecom sector. One thing that we all know for sure that technology constantly changes. So eloquently, so it has been said that, you know, the technology already exists for 5G. It's really the data that is being sought. But that technology already exists as well, not only in the fiber, but Comcast already has announced the one gigabit speed. And it also exists in satellite, it also exists with Dish Network. Personally, I hate politics. I hate being here. I'm only compelled because it's impacting our quality of life. It's my concern with my family. It's everybody's concern here. And the only reason I got my butt here tonight is for that. Just want to express that. After spending most of my life in Monterey and having the option of living in San Francisco if I so wished, but I ran away from San Francisco because the quality of life here was so much better. I want to retain that. So please vote for the 100-foot setback. It's also important to me, also important to any word.
Anybody else in the chambers? Okay, let's go online, please.
All right, it looks like we have our first hand raised T Schneider. T Schneider, please go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, great. Thanks for allowing me a few moments to speak. My name's Tabitha Schneider. I'm a supervisor for network permitting at Crown Castle. For the record, my public comment was sent via email to the city clerk's office and I also attended the hearing back in February and we, we do appreciate the work and effort that the city has put into drafting the proposed, the proposed ordinance. One thing I want to mention is that, you know, since I do permitting for small cells all the time, one of the things that struck me the most about reading the proposed ordinance, and I read ordinances from different cities all the time. It looks like the models that you tried to use from like Malibu and the other jurisdiction used, which I, it's not on the top of my head right now. There's a lot of ordinances out there that are good, that I think achieve what your constituents want to achieve. One of the things that I see that really confuses, I think, not only people that are unfamiliar with federal regulations, but also even somebody like me who reads different ordinances all the time, is there's not a clear delineation in this proposed ordinance between small cells and towers. Some of the language that you're trying to use kind of co-mingles between the two. So when you, when you want to put a small cell facility, for instance, in the public right-of-way, you know, your right-of-way may only be 45 or 60 feet. It's basically, you know, the width of the street, maybe expanding on around the sidewalk. So when you say that you want 100-foot setback from a residence, that's challenging because the right-of-way doesn't give you, there's not enough space to get you that 100-foot setback. And when you're building small cell towers, they have a really short range. So, you know, we actually, you know, work through site selection and try to look for poles that are in between houses, not right in front of a house when we choose. But sometimes if you get too, too much farther than a couple hundred feet away, you actually lose your objective to densify your network. So I wanted to say that. I do hope that the council will pass on voting on this tonight so that you can continue to look at all the different ways that the proposed ordinance that you have right now still conflicts with federal law. And I also really think that if you spend some time looking at other cities' ordinances in general, not just looking at the most restrictive ones, I think you would find a lot of language that you can use in your ordinance. And, you know, the, the impression that I got from the, the first meeting that you had on this back in February, the first reading, was that somebody brought, brought it to everyone's attention. Well, we've worked on this for four years, so we, we almost feel obligated.
Wrap your comments up, please. Thank you. Our next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine four one. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, this is Kristy Hollenbeck. I recently had the pleasure of speaking to Susan Foster, who was instrumental in getting a moratorium on the placement of cell towers on fire stations. More recently, she helped to write the fire safety section for Encinitas and Malibu, California. Foster makes it clear that cell towers and related telecommunications equipment can cause wildfires. Each cell tower is an electrical device. When electrical devices fail, electrical fires can be triggered. Cell tower fires cannot be extinguished through conventional means. Anyone putting water on a cell tower fire before the electricity is cut, which can take up to 60 minutes, will be electrocuted. Imagine a cell tower fire in a Monterey neighborhood in the midst of a windstorm like the ones a few weeks ago. And there's nothing you can do until PG&E cuts the power. According to Foster, four major fires have been initiated, at least in part, due to telecommunications equipment within the last 15 years in Southern California alone, costing well over $6 billion in damages. According to the FCC, safety belongs to the locality to regulate. That includes safety setbacks. Monterey needs to put these setbacks in their wireless ordinance. Foster says fall zones must be at least the height of the tower with 50% added on to that because of the falling debris field. Andrew Campanelli says you can impose fairly substantial setback requirements as long as you create a procedural mechanism through which an applicant can seek relief from that restriction. 100-foot setbacks are extremely reasonable and should be included. Campanelli says grounds for denial of an application doesn't come from federal law. It comes from your ordinance, your local planning commission. If your ordinance says so, it has the power to make factual determinations. If someone files an application for a cell tower, your planning commission must make factual determinations. They get to decide if a cell tower will have adverse aesthetic impact, if it will reduce property values, if it's out of character with the neighborhood, or if it will adversely impact aesthetic resources. They get to decide what evidence they have to produce and what weight to give that evidence. They have tremendous power. Who determines what weight to give any piece of evidence? Well, if your, if your ordinance says your planning commission gets to do it, then they do. If your ordinance doesn't say that, then they don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, this is Nina Beatty. This ordinance and these changes do not move the city forward with a more protective and thorough ordinance, which was the goal of the residence draft, using ordinances from other cities. This moves us backwards, weakening the protections that exist now. What this ordinance does is continue to cut out 60% of the residents of this city and all the small business tenants. They don't get legal notices. Staff refused to change that, even though we asked for this. There are new exemptions in this ordinance that allow wireless facilities that weren't allowed in the past. These exemptions for wireless facilities means that they don't have to comply with any of these rules. And there are no hearings, no public notifications and no applications. That includes government agency equipment that goes on public property, next to people's homes or on private property. Those are allowed in this new ordinance. Wireless facilities that are mounted behind existing screens are now exempted from rules. Wireless facilities that are shared use with the building occupants are now exempted by these rules. Larger equipment is allowed. You remember the huge equipment shown to the planning commission by the residents and what the facility on Canary Row presently looks like before any co-locations or upgrades have occurred. The wireless committee said no to wireless equipment hanging on utility lines because of the fire danger, the wind load, the stress. But this is now allowed in this version in a very unclear language and this increases the fire danger. And temporary facilities are allowed in this new ordinance that can remain in place as long as staff allows. And there's no public notice, no hearings, no RF reports, et cetera, et cetera. They're simply not regulated. A section impacting that's called impacts on public use for the right-of-way facilities has been deleted from this ordinance. Setbacks from residences are essential. Expanded notification zones to 500 to 1,000 feet are essential. I stand with Robert and the others you've heard in the past who have EMS-sensitive medical conditions like cancer, nerve damage, who have medical devices who are electromagnetically sensitive. Staff removed ADA from the ordinance and ADA and fair housing considerations must be in the ordinance to be considered in individual decisions. Robert needs 300 feet. 2,600 setback was, still affected me when I lived near a cell tower. Federal laws continue to be ignored that protect communities, protect your local, your power and protect local, state and federal laws. And we have heard nothing about the Telecommunications Act stating that these laws must be specifically mentioned in the TCA for them to be be removed, be, them be exempted by TCA. Lawsuits on decisions denying projects are limited to expedited legal review. There are no damages, no legal fees allowed by federal rule. There are serious problems with this wireless ordinance and I urge you to reconsider what is before you. There's, they have...
Thank you. Your time has passed. The next caller is has the last three digits of three zero six. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. The FCC refuses to address the non-thermal health effects of wireless radiation. So I will address the thermal effects. And I quote from an article from the Wall Street Journal. "The antennas fueling the nation's cell phones are challenging federal safety rules that were put in place when signals largely radiated from remote towers off limits to the public." "One in 10 sites violates the rules, according to six engineers who examined more than 5,000 sites during safety audits for carriers and local municipalities, underscoring a safety lapse in the network. That's 500 towers out of 5,500." "The FCC admits that at very high levels, radio frequency radiation can cook human tissue, potentially causing cataracts and temporary sterility and other health issues. But the FCC says it lacks resources to monitor each antenna. Carriers have to restrict access near antennas that are above the limit. Workers and others who venture into hotspots, generally up to 20 feet in front of an antenna, must be trained and have RF monitors. And I, I think they also have to have protective clothing. Most older cellular antennas aren't strong enough to cause thermal problems, engineers say. But the new ones are being made stronger to meet demand for high-speed internet access, high-definition video and other services. A German study found higher emissions from 4G antennas than on 5G. The more bandwidth, the hotter they will be. But please, don't allow any cell towers within 1,000 feet of homes and schools. Thank you very much. I think I forgot to say my name at the beginning. It's Carol Kuzdenji."
Sorry, could you repeat that, please? Your name?
Carol Kuzdenji.
Thank you.
Like Carol Kuz... Okay.
All right, our next speaker is Tom Rowley.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. I submitted a letter previously, but I didn't see it in the staff report for tonight from the Fisherman's Flats. from the Fisherman's Flats Homeowners and Residents Association. Our executive council did meet and unanimously agreed with the hundred-foot setback for residences and school buildings that was recommended by the planning commission. I think it's been documented earlier by many speakers on why this is a necessary minimal distance to protect our citizens. So again, our neighborhood is in favor of the hundred-foot setback for residents and building, school buildings. Thank you very much.
All right, our next speaker is Tammy Jennings.
Yes, my name is Tammy Jennings. I live in Monterey. And you can add my name to the petition because they didn't get around to my house, but I definitely would have signed it. All I can say is, Council Mayor, you've heard of a you've heard from a lot of really smart people here today. The first speaker was amazing. The telecom people, the gentleman who hiked up and his arm started buzzing because of the I am just blown away by the amount of people and the information I've heard here today. I don't know how you could not follow what your residents and your your neighbors and my neighbors want. Please listen to the people that have spoken here tonight and do the right thing. And put it back the way the planning department suggested that it be done. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Rash.
Thank you. Jean Rash, Monterey Vista. I join in the chorus of residents who want the one hundred-foot setback and the language that the planning commission approved and recommended. I also applaud Dr. Barber for her courage in standing alone on February seventh. I was also very concerned with the lack of questioning from some of the other council members and the dismissiveness with which I feel this has been treated by staff and council. It's a great concern. So I hope you'll approve the planning commission version. One thing that has not been repeated tonight, which confuses me, the in on page twenty-five of the planning commission recommendation, historical zoning is parallel to residential zoning as a discouraged location. And yet, there are additional restraints on historical locations such as you have to hide all the small cell towers. They can't be visible. So there are additional restraints for historical locations, and yet staff is so sensitive to adding additional restraints to locations in residential neighborhoods such as one hundred-feet setbacks. And I just can't figure the logic out of that. And I hope you'll stand by the majority of voices that you're hearing tonight and support the planning commission version. Thank you.
There are no further comments on Zoom.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for every. Did you want to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Deborah, and we moved from Fremont, California to come to Monterey. We're paying higher in our mortgage than we would up in Fremont and our taxes, so we would live in a beautiful area. When this thing originally started, there was a cell tower that was supposed to be put in front of my window off of my balcony, one down the street from my house and one going in the other direction. And I was totally devastated that this would we would be bombarded by these cell tower machines. I can't understand why we everybody's accepting of a hundred-feet setback. Why not five hundred? Why do we have to cram so many cell towers in there? We have great internet. We have our phones are working, and all of a sudden it's like since Verizon came in to make this announcement, it's a big push. And we don't want it. Our kids don't want it. I'm fearful of the kids that are growing up in this area, what their what their life and what their health issues are going to be. I'm fearful for the elderly people that live here that already have pre-existing conditions. We don't want this. Nobody wants this. And I don't know why anybody here is settling for a hundred-feet setback or two hundred. Why not five? I mean, you're taking away our health, our community, the beauty, and 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 how we feel about the safety of our neighborhood based on these shelters. We don't need anymore. We have so many so many wires and things hanging off already. When you come into the city, you see them everywhere. And they're low. Now you're going to have these, and soon as as soon as Verizon gets in, then AT&amp;T is probably going to get in there, and other people are going to be trying to compete for the same type of service. They want to get their stuff on the poles, too. Why do we have to even allow this? With T-Mobile, they have it off of where the Boots Road up on the hill. They have it private. They don't have it in residential areas. Why do we have to allow it? I mean, we're all fighting to stay healthy as long as we can. We need your support. We need you to back us up. We need you to be help us so we have the community and the trust in you that we deserve. So I'm not happy because I don't want to be looking out on my balcony to a cell tower and down my street, which is only about two doors down, and down the other way. I'm being I'll be really impacted by this, and my kids, and the people around us, and the kids that go to Monterey High. It's not fair. You need to think of their their lives, too. Anyways, I just wanted to say this. It's really been heartbreaking for me. I have a hard time sleeping at night because I this really has affected me. I'm paying higher in property taxes for a beautiful area that's not going to look beautiful anymore. I don't know if I want to live here anymore. And you know, it's going to affect the residential area. Anyways, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any last takers in the chamber? Okay, we're going to close public comment at this time. Thanks for everybody that shared public comment. We'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. I just want to start off by I completely acknowledge and hear what you're saying. I think your message is consistent with what I hear a lot of folks saying. I just want to be clear, though. We don't have an ability to prevent completely ban it. We don't have that authority here. We can control aesthetics, and I think that's where we're trying to work with the public on doing what we can here. So we're going to have a dialogue and try to do that where we can. But you know, I was taking a little bit of tally from the public comments that I heard. In the fair majority of people that spoke, spoke of health and safety concerns, and we have no ability to regulate this based off of health and safety. So we'll do what we can within the aesthetic parameters that we have as a municipality. But I just want to I hope folks can direct their energy to the right decision-makers. And in regards to health and safety issues, we have no ability to regulate in that space. Am I do I understand that correctly, staff? I just want to make sure I'm not speaking inappropriately here.
You're referring to health and safety as RF emissions. Like, we can't
Correct.
We can't regulate based on fear of RF emissions that are compliant with FCC regulations. That's right.
Thanks for the clarification, Mayor. Let me just do a few more.
I was just going to suggest that we've been at it since seven. Might I suggest a very short break?
Okay.
It's the right time when you're done with your comments.
Okay, let's 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 do till six o'clock. So we'll be back. We're going to start right at nine o'clock sharp. So let's just go ahead and do that. Ready, break.
So you want to say?
All right, welcome back from break. And I will continue with where I left off. I would just say some of the comments that I've heard have identified the the aesthetics and where we really have opportunity here. And to me, the fact of the matter is, is that, again, no matter what we do as a jurisdiction, the telecom companies are going to be able to put some towers up. We're going to fight it to the extent that we can, and they're going to be able to put some up. It's just going to happen. And I think the true concern, and even if they didn't put the cell towers up, is the electric power lines. They are not aesthetically pleasing. And if there's an opportunity for us to underground, I would want to put more energy into that as opposed to focusing on this, though I understand where the concerns are. So I just I'm acknowledging the concerns in regards to the aesthetics. If there can be some energy focused in that space of undergrounding, I think that that could could address a lot a lot broader issues in regards to the aesthetics. I think I'm going to stop there for now. There was one question that I heard from the public that I'm hoping staff could answer, and I we did talk about it earlier. But the question was along the lines of some cities can put the poles a thousand feet apart, but we are really only doing two hundred and fifty. So I was hoping that we could just reiterate a response for for that question that was asked.
Gail is still on. We could probably have her articulate that, but it's they're all set up structurally differently, each city. And ours started with this framework with the protections in place, and some other cities take a different approach. And Gail's worked with so many cities. I'll let her summarize that for you.
Well, one quick answer is the small cells have a range anywhere between three hundred feet to a thousand feet. So if you space them a thousand feet apart, you will require a different set of small cells. And of course, geography plays a role as well, but small cells are called small cells because they just have a very small range.
Thank you. Gail, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, that everything that's been said is is correct. And so I think it bears remembering that that the way this your ordinance was structured was to to require an effective prohibition showing to go into a residential area. Or some some other cities don't require it to be in a residential area, but they may have larger spacing requirements, and then of an effective prohibition showing if you if you can't meet those spacing requirements. But the spacing is going to depend a lot on the whether a spacing requirement that's larger, say a thousand feet or three hundred feet or something, or five hundred feet, its impact is going to be case by case, right? Because it's really going to depend on where providers already have facilities and whether they can find a location that that is serving them and filling out their network without and still maintaining those those spacing requirements. So it's hard to to say, well, if one community does it, it'll work everywhere. It sort of it kind of depends on topography and all sorts of other factors, case by case.
Okay, and I do actually have one more question, and then I'll open up to the rest of my colleagues here. What additional expectations would be required by a telecom industry application with the hundred-foot setback requirement that would be different from the requirement that we already have included of restrictions around in residential zones? So what would they have to prove in addition to what they would already be proving with the restriction around the residential zone if, say, they wanted to put it on the power line that's outside of my property on Franklin? Gail, I'm not sure if that might be a good question for you.
Yeah, that might be one for me. So if they're so the way they they would look at a location is they're not going to be looking just at the location standards, but also the other look at a location is they're not going to be looking just at the location standards, but also the other requirements that you have in your code. So to use existing facilities, and then they're going to be looking at, well, say if they're going on a utility pole, not every utility pole can be used for a wireless facility. So there's, there's a whole process that they would go through. But say they determined that they wanted to use a pole and it was both within 100 feet of your, of a residential property and in a residential area, then it, they would be having basically to show the same thing that, that, that it's that they, they have to show, and if they would have to make an effective prohibition showing to get into the residential area. And then presumably if they can make that showing, they've shown they need to be at that location. So that would also deal with the 100 foot issue.
Okay, thank you. Who'd like to go next? Gino.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few points I'd like to share. First, I'd like to acknowledge the public who has presented very legitimate concerns. Concerns that I take very serious and that I'm considering when formulating my own opinions and ultimately my decision. I also think it's important to acknowledge that there's a segment of our population of about 30,000 who are not here present in person or virtually, but who are also counting on their elected officials and have entrusted us with the responsibility of making decisions that are also in their best interest. So for me, this, this item is complex. We can talk about concerns relating to health and safety. But the way that I have understood the information we have in front of us is that we, as a city, are making a decision to either provide or deny access for this wireless infrastructure. So the maps presented by our city staff, in my opinion, demonstrate that if we do accept a setback of any distance, 25, 75, 100 feet, we would in essence be denying the implementation of this infrastructure. And therefore, the access of the technology to residents throughout most of our city. So the federal government has given us parameters in terms of providing access for the installation of towers or small cells that will in turn provide our residents with access to current and future technologies. Some technologies that may not even exist yet. And I believe that our city staff has done and will continue to do its due diligence as we move forward with an ordinance. There's a, an explanation on page 171 of the agenda packet dated February 21st of the federal standards. And our, our staff clarifies that, quote, basically, the wireless applicant will have to demonstrate to the planning commission that the proposed facility has to be located in a residential district in order to provide the personal wireless, wireless service. So, excuse me, this gives me the impression that our planning commission and staff will have the opportunity to assess placement of these towers on a case by case, which is, I think, the watchful eye that we all want. The alternative here is that we restrict the access by forcing setbacks will be placed in our city at unnecessary, unnecessary risk of litigation right at, at the gate. And then the city will likely be facing lawsuits which involve costs both in staff time and, and funds. And those efforts may ultimately result in the city still having to provide the initial access that we would be attempting to restrict. Now here, another point, a little bit different here that I, I'm not sure has been really touched upon. I'm also looking at this through the equity lens. So during the pandemic, we may recall many students struggling to continue their education because of the lack of access of this very technology that we're talking about here. I have children and I don't want them, I don't want to see them. I don't want to see our residents deprived of the connectivity that we all deserve. I'm again referring to the folks who spoke here tonight and all the folks that we represent. And, and whether we like it or not, we are living in a technology-driven world and not having the proper infrastructure to access that technology, I believe, will put our city and residents at a disadvantage. I have children. I don't want them to be deprived of all that. So for those reasons, I, I will support the ordinance as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Need some clarifications on, and, and I'm, let me just openly say that I'm struggling with this one because i- in my mind, I need to ask the question, what are we trying to achieve at the end of the day? And also a risk reward analysis that puts me in a place where I can gather more information. So on the one hand, I am comparing what we have in the first reading, what I would call the, the proposed language, and then trying to pull out of that, what we get out of that. And if I do a summary here, bear with me. On packet page five, it starts mid, mid-page. Basically, the wireless applicant will have to demonstrate to the planning commission that the proposed facility has to be located in a residential district in order to provide the personal wireless service. There are also other circumstances and locations where an effective prohibition showing is required by section 38 dash 112.4 large F10. So what we're trying to avoid is establishing an ordinance, if I have this right, establishing an ordinance that gives our staff guidance when applications come in, that then tells them where the priorities must be, what is defensible. And under all circumstances, because of the federal law, we must avoid exposing us to an effective prohibition, which then says the applicant and the industry can point to that because federal law says that that is a standard, federal law standard. So we're trying, we're trying to set up an ordinance that keeps us away from an effective prohibition. So if that's where we're trying to land, I have to ask the question, have we worded it sufficiently? And I heard some testimony before where some were asking, well, why does it not more clearly state that R1s are prohibited? So that what, there was conversation and statements that it was absent words like prohibited, restricted, forbidden, must avoid. So I'd like to hear from the attorneys about the language that was chosen to describe why we're saying R1s are not where you can go. So if we could ask the attorneys to explain more about the language that they have in the paraph, in the phrase, why R1s are restricted. So if I could hear from the attorneys about that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in and then Gail, if you want to jump in after you feel free. So the way the ordinance is structured now, it's set up with preferences. The city cannot just outright ban in a residential area. With our existing ordinance, there was some confusion over which takes precedence, location or design and that type of thing. And so it's the least preferred location. And that's as, as really as strong as you can get with absent a ban. And then on top of that, we're saying you don't get to go there unless you show that you're allowed to go there under federal law.
Okay, so referencing the old ordinance by acting this new ordinance, the old ordinance is removed and gone.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
So this is the only ordinance that we will then be working with as an applicant comes in.
Correct. And it was structured this way at the behest of the wireless subcommittee. So it was set up with these preferences in mind. Those were all policy choices. And the effective prohibition standard is a very strong one. And that basically allows federal law to overrule your city code, which is, that's the rule, that's the law that we have to follow ultimately. So.
Okay. So I understand that was the subcommittee leaning towards many, many meetings where they, they were after having the avoidance of an effective prohibition, but also saying R1s is what we want to protect above.
Exactly. That was the whole motivation of all those meetings at the subcommittee level.
Right.
And in addition, the setback idea did not present itself until the planning commission hearings this, in late 2022.
Yeah.
So those, that was not in the subcommittee's draft ordinance when it went to planning commission.
Okay. So I want to layer on to that. So the 100 foot setback is new once, once it went to the planning commission. And we heard a lot about that request from the public callers and present here tonight. But also I want to address the 200 foot, 200 foot spacing. So in this ordinance. So am I accurate in saying if there was an R1, because there was a showing that it was an effective prohibition and they had to put it in a residential neighborhood, it still has to be at least 250 feet apart from another site. Am I accurate in that? Okay. So if I look at the matrix and said either or and said, if I had 100 foot spacing and that were the ordinance, would that not mean that 100 foot spacing ordinance once proven that it was necessary in an R1 could possibly mean more locations in an R1? Because it could be as close as 250 feet, but they would have to be a setback of 100 feet. So wouldn't we be setting up a new map that would show us that we could potentially even have more locations by trying to work with 100? So I want to, I want to talk about that and dialogue that. And I don't have a clear answer in my mind. So I want to propose the question, if we had 100 foot, where is the risk from having 100 foot setback? So we've heard the testimony, but I want to also figure out from a technological standpoint, why don't we want 100 foot setback? Is there greater risk if we had 100 foot setback?
And maybe Gail can point on this some more, but part of the struggle is working with the wireless subcommittee's ordinance that structured it this way, where there is an effective prohibition. And just to reiterate, it means you cannot put any small cells in a residential area unless federal law mandates it, right? And that's the effective prohibition standard. So our ordinance says right now, that's the least preferred location, and we're only going to let you put it there if the federal law says you must put it there. And what that means is a case by case basis, that's true. And what that means will change over time as more courts weigh in on what is an effective prohibition. It's a federal standard and, and it's subject to judicial interpretation. And so when you throw in the 100 foot setback idea or any number of feet setback idea, that's pulled from ordinances in other cities structured very differently than ours. And so it layers on top of our existing very strong stringent, I, I frankly don't know how you really get it stronger than that. Another layer that, you know, Gail can maybe submit to that.
Right, sure. Sure. What I would add is, and I think the map showed this, that when you have the 100 foot setback from all residents, that all residences or all residential properties, then it expands basically the area that would be subject to an effective prohibition showing well beyond just the residential zones, but in, in more and more commercial areas as well. And I think Kim mentioned also as you, that, that's a living, if that were your living standard, then as there's more housing development outside of traditional residential zones, that would further expand the area where, that the 100 foot setback would apply.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure I heard an answer, except for from Chrissy that said, as the staff report supports, we've selected in this recommendation, the highest and greatest protection for the R1. And having a 100, 100 foot setback as an example actually doesn't offer any more protection. It actually kind of opens up the door for what the applicants may do. No, wait a minute, I'm asking a question. I'm not making a factual statement. So it's a dialogue we're having with our council and technical staff. So please bear with us as we probe and ask these questions because it's important. So Chrissy, do you, do you have anything else to offer on that? On the 100 foot, it sounded like your answer was
It's
where, where we, where we are trying to land is the greatest protection for R1.
I think Gail explained it really well, that last sentence there. So in our preferences, residential is the least preferred, whereas commercial might be more preferred, right? To put the facilities or industrial areas. And as the map showed, it's expanding a protection beyond the residential areas into zones that would normally be preferred. And that is not, was never anywhere in the discussion at all those hearings leading up to the planning commission meeting. So it does more than what the residents are purporting it does. And the current draft, as drafted, I believe, has a very stringent threshold showing required before these facilities can be put into a residential area consistent with federal law.
Could I, could I ask a follow-up question to your question? I hear a lot of the comments from the public saying, we shouldn't even do 100. We should be talking about greater. We should be talking about 500. Does, does making these additional restrictions in a way water down our ordinance to the extent, and I, I think this may be where you're getting at a little bit, to the extent that we're not strongly defining where we say it should be, we're just kind of doing a more blanket, we shouldn't, it shouldn't be anywhere in the entire city. So now we're not making a legally sound document that we can say, hey, we're, we're prioritizing where we say we want it to be. But by basically expanding this to a point where it's essentially covering almost the entire city, it's, it becomes harder for us to defend. Is that essentially kind of where some of the concern is?
There, an argument could be made that with such wide parameters, where it's prohibited, that, that wasn't truly an aesthetic consideration. So the council would need to be thoughtful in its deliberations and really articulate the aesthetic reasons for such an expansive parameter.
That's correct. And, and I also, if I, if I may just add, there are two types of challenges that you can see for these ordinances. One is, you know, what they would call as applied challenge. So an applicant makes an application, they make an effective prohibition claim or whatever, and they get denied and they challenge that decision as violating federal law because it created an effective prohibition. But the other type of challenge that you see, it's a little bit more rare, but it does happen. And, and it was a, a challenge in that Los Altos case that I mentioned that that the city ended up changing their ordinance was a facial challenge where just the, and in that instance, I think Verizon was one of the challengers to the ordinance. They did a, they hired an expert to evaluate all the different criteria that were required. And they said, basically, the city's ordinance said would not allow wireless in 90% of the city or something like that. So that, they said facially, you're just creating an effective prohibition, you're just of the city or something like that. So that, they said facially, you're just creating an effective prohibition, you're just because of all of the different restrictions, the cumulative impact of all the different restrictions.
Alan has some quick
Yeah, yeah, go, okay.
So I guess I'm wondering about whether or not we could offer legal justification if we included a hundred foot setback for R1 zones and historic zones. And my rationale there is that they are aesthetically different than other, other zones in the city. That the cumulative effect of adding additional utilities in the R1s would be noticeable in a way that it would not be noticeable. Obviously, in industrial, commercial, or, or even more heavily populated zoned areas. So I guess Chrissy, my question, would that be more defensible in your view? I certainly think there is an aesthetic difference based on zoned areas like that.
It's certainly an idea that could be looked at. We don't have a map prepared to show what the effect of that would be, but it would be less of an effect than what's proposed currently.
I do think that there are legitimate aesthetic concerns that have been raised and some that haven't been raised that certainly I have. This is a historic city. This is a city of natural beauty that is a national treasure. Adding additional utility facilities close to R1 homes will create a cumulative, cumulative impact that's negative. We are a tree city. We are a city with ocean views. And we are a tourist destination. So I'm leaning towards some kind of modification that would that would include a hundred foot setback in our one zone.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
So ditto, as far as dealing with that part. But, but really, I wanted to comment about the the equitable lens of the, the student. That's always a concern for me as a university administrator. And I got to see that firsthand. And what I noticed is that was more in the southern part of the Monterey County than actually Monterey City, because we had to actually go and put and bring hotspots to our students out in that area. They couldn't get there during COVID. So I don't think that would be a big problem for the city of Monterey. That's what we, we, at least we haven't seen this. What, what we've seen. But in considering the effective prohibition, this goes back to the planning commission. And the planning commission is the one that has the community input to, to add the hundred foot and has the authority to give the recommendation for the density of housing. I think it just makes sense to go ahead with the hundred foot.
Okay, so can staff point to me where we have the verbiage? Yeah, I'm just having a hard time relocating again. The verbiage where it lays out the R1 prohibition. And I believe staff had it in a slide earlier. I'm trying to locate it in the agenda packet. Could maybe just, can we go to the, the slide? That was probably the easiest where we had the PowerPoint slide where it talked about the prohibition.
I see it on page six of the ordinance.
So, not, not packet page, but item number six?
If you go to the ordinance, and then it's the sixth page, it's let me see real quick.
In the whereas's?
Now therefore, now therefore.
Yeah. Just working, working through the pages here.
You have section four.
So she, she has it on the slide. If you could go larger for us. Uh slideshow and then from present slide. There we go. Thank you. So that it is in alignment with the whereas page uh under the ordinance. And Tyler, bear with me. You said, which page was it on the whereas?
Uh, page six.
Okay.
It says, so it's, it's the
Council adjourning me, it's three, two.
I'm trying to pull this back. Section four, wireless communication facilities. And then you go to, I think it's D. Yeah, section D, planning applications and approval required. D two B.
And I'm sorry, it's, I'm not following the page numbers because there's item page and packet page.
You know, I can get you the packet page. Hold on. Just go back. Today's the, the second agenda packet.
And the reason this is important is we make a motion and the ordinance is red. I want to make sure we're in alignment here.
Okay, so it is on packet page eighteen, I believe. Yes. Packet page eighteen. And then there, there's B, and then it under five. And I could be getting this wrong, but my assumption there is there's an exception. In the case of an emergency, the temporary wireless communication facilities is not proposed for residential zoning districts.
That, though, that, if I might interrupt, that's only when you're talking about temporary facilities, but the, the one for like a, a permanent facility, you say on a utility pull is later. That's in that I don't know how to give you a reference, but it's, it's a number ten special considerations for certain districts. Or I have comes later in the ordinance.
Everybody else can follow along.
Thirty-five and the
Thirty-five, yeah.
Packet page number.
Thirty-five.
Okay, the city manager is the star tonight. I believe he's found it. Packet page thirty-seven.
Or thirty-seven.
My apologies, I don't have all my equipment here tonight to make this faster. Considerations for certain districts.
You're asking about historic.
No, not historic. The verbiage that aligns with what's on the screen and in the PowerPoint presentation.
Well, Gail just said special consideration for certain districts, and that does align up with what he just, thirty-seven.
Right, I don't think it's thirty-seven.
So on page thirty-five, nine A, it says placement preferences. And the city has the following preferences. And then it says city-owned or controlled parcels outside of open space.
Packet page thirty-five.
Yeah, nine A.
In nine A. Packet page thirty-five?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Under preferences. So I, I want to, I want to just dial in here to an earlier point I had, and, and maybe this is where it's back to a lawyer opinion here, but as this reads, city-owned or controlled parcels outside of open space districts, residential zoning districts is, is a so the way it's written, it can, it can easily be, I think, interpreted by some lawyers, I'm sure, need it this way. But if we are going to land on something that says R1 is prohibited, why cannot we not use stronger language under this preferred location where because it's passive language rather than affirmative language. So it's a question for the lawyer as it's written, because quite frankly, it is complicated. There's a lot of pages to this. We want to get it right, and we also need to make sure that our community understands what we act on. And so I would like to, you know, work on the language of how we're saying that our ones is, is the absolute last place based on the criteria that has to go through for
So I, I came to this.
And Gail, Gail.
We have a fire.
Had some sirens and things going. It warms my heart when I hear that, by the way, but go ahead, Gail.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I may not be in the best position to answer this because I came to this drafting late in the, the process. So this was two years of, of meetings and work and other work. And then, as, as you all may recall, I I helped, I kind of stepped in when my colleague, Joe Van Eaton passed away. So I don't have all the history of how they came up with the, the precise wording. But I will say that, and it's the same thing that Chrissy mentioned earlier, that, that this was drafted in terms of of stating preferences, not outright prohibitions. So there are and they're pretty detailed preferences for locations and within those locations the types of structures. So there's kind of preferences within each location. And then if you get, so for example, if you get to nine E, it, it, they're at nine E, they're talking about if your, if a provider shows that they would be permitted in a non-preferred area. So that would be like a residential area which under ten, they would have to show an effective prohibition to be in the residential area. Then if they're in a residential area, then there is a whole order of preferences of where they should be going in there. So it's not just once you're in a residential area, you can go anywhere. But if you made that effective prohibition showing, then there's a list in nine E of the preferred locations to be placing facilities. So it's pretty complicated because it's quite detailed in terms of directing applicants where to, to place facilities to have the least sort of impacts.
So I might be able to just provide a little more perspective. Joe Van Eaton actually recommended to the subcommittee that we not include this information in the ordinance and we create a set of design guidelines that maybe show photographs, that show examples of what we wanted in each area. And the subcommittee didn't want to do that because there were concerns that if you showed what you wanted to see in a residential area, then then that would somehow manifest itself. And so what that left with was we need to show an area of preferences where we want it. And then within those preference areas, so it's on city parcels outside of open space historic, that's like our parking garages. That's our, our, outside of open space historic properties. So on those sites, we'd like to first of all, I believe, see them building mounted. Then, and so we gave then a list of priorities of where they should be located within those sites. And so we did that first for city-owned properties. Then after that is commercial properties, it was actually the same priorities. There was rooftop, building mounted, and they didn't really want to see them hanging really far from the building. So they gave priorities in commercial buildings, and those read the same for industrial. And then the last preference, it's not even a preference. If you're going in a non-preferred area, which is in the residential area, then this is how we would like to see those facilities look. Now, Joe actually, Joe Eaton didn't really like all the language, to be honest. He wanted a set of concise design guidelines. And that was not preferred. Because it was seen as a way that it would enable the facilities.
Do you have a proposal that would help identify more about the least preferred, where it's got stronger language that's more affirmative?
I mean, we could, we could work on that, but the council's directive to us was to leave as much intact the wireless subcommittee's ordinance and just editing it for legal sufficiency. So to try to have that be their work product here. So we haven't really, you know, this is not staff work product. This is the wireless subcommittee's ordinance that we've edited as minimally as possible, and we explained every edit in ninety foot notes. So every, every edit we made has been thoroughly explained. And so we can take a new direction, but we I, I don't think I can do that on the fly tonight.
No.
I don't know that Gail could either, but so it's, it's
Well, the, let me just wrap up my line of question. The greatest concern I have is that it just doesn't have the affirmative language that I would like to hear on the least preference R1s. It's, and I know it's legal interpretation. You read this, you read that, you read, you go through the priority, but when it comes down to it, it is the least preferred. And we are saying we want to restrict the R1 at all costs, and it's a high bar, and they have to prove that there's no way that they can do it unless they are in an R1. And so then the planning commission has to rule that, and then would come to the council if it ultimately gets to an appeal. So I guess I'm just looking for more language that affirmatively speaks to the R1 segment. Which is, when you read it, it is the least and the last location to turn to. And, and that's the tenor of the, of the ordinance, and I understand that.
If I could just make one comment, the ordinance is drafted is all residential properties. So the to carry out your idea, we would need to go through the ordinance and break apart R3, R2, PC, that's Skyline Forest. So just so even though it's, it's not zoned R1, it's zoned planned community. So
No, it's not just plug a, a sentence in, and it's certainly much more complex than that.
So I, I'd like to, to try something here, and as much as possible, yeah, I just have a thought real quick. I, as much as possible, I'd like to get us to all be on the same page. And I, and so I, I hear some interest and desire to try and take a new direction in trying to strike a balance between you know, not extending the restrictions too far, but maintaining the focus on residential areas, which we already have that written into the ordinance. And so if anything, it sounds that we're calcifying, we're, we're making stronger the protections there. And so I'm, I'm hoping that I can make an appeal to Gino, but also respect whatever decision that you make here in, in trying to get us to come together. So if it's not going to restrict any additional areas, you know, and, and we're only strengthening where we currently have it in regards to what they want, I want to try this and, and see if I can get your support here on this. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance and include the language as identified by Alan. So we'll have the a hundred foot setback requirement in the residential zone, zones only. Does that capture enough clarity in regards to what's needed?
All the, all the residential zones, the PC and
R1, R2, R3, PC, or are we just talking R1? Because I thought
So
That's a much
Would I, would I, I've, the conversations that I've had with residents, it sounds to be more R1. But I'm assuming we may want to include PC in there as well. So I would say R1 and PC.
So my suggestion, what I think I'm getting, just because I work with zoning every day, I think it would be R1 and the PC areas that cover Skyline Forest.
Okay, perfect.
And not the PC, PC areas that cover all our downtowns and commercial areas.
Okay, so that would be the motion.
I'll, I'll second that. And I'll, I'll just kind of say this, which is our goal way back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen was to have the strongest legally defensible ordinance. And so I think it's important to note both of those. And that we all And that we also wanted to work with the community to develop that ordinance. And, and so where we're at now, the proposed ordinance is really the outcome of that process. Um, the legally defensible part is tricky. Um, in reality, probably no matter what we come up with, there will be legal challenges. The technology is going to continue to change. The um, other court cases and other jurisdictions, as Chrissy said, it's like a, an ongoing. Moving target. There are going to be changes there. The federal government, which has authority over us in this area. May continue to change legislation and rules. So this is, this is where we're at now and we'll just have to deal with those changes as they come. And, um, but I think this is what our community wants. And uh. And, and so I think this is, this is a reasonable way forward. I also do believe it is legally justifiable based on aesthetics. Because of the unique nature of our city, which I tried to outline in my comments earlier. And because of the unique nature of our ones within the city.
I, I would add that, um, you know, it, it could be seen. As an, as an equity issue when we're focusing it on certain zoned areas over others. But I think that there's a case to be made that the way that the zoning currently works. The aesthetics issue becomes a greater concern in R one zones as opposed to R two and R three. So I think that there's a case to be made here. Um, and we're not, I don't think going too far out of the parameters in regards to. The original motion that we made. So any last, sorry, we're, we're public comments closed unfortunately.
And so just a, a clarification on the motion. And I'd like to hear from staff in terms of.
Sorry, sorry, real quick. And the only reason why I say that is because if I open it up for you, I have to open it up for everybody else in the room as well. So I'm sorry. So no, sorry, we can't, we can't. I'm so sorry. Cause I would have to, I would have to offer it to every single person and I, and I just want to be fair to everybody in, in the public. I go ahead and.
And Old Town is mostly our ones where you live, right?
I'm in R two.
You're in R two.
Yeah, so I would, I'm, I'm not risk here, but I'm, I'm okay with that. So.
Uh, I just want to say I live also R two, uh, uh, but I wanted to, to share if, if we've followed that motion. We need to have a second reading again.
Yeah, so that was, that was in question. I wanted to, to cover the expectation and what the staff is going to need in terms of timeline. Uh, because this is not just a plug and play rewrite one sentence. This is actually as, as Kim has outlined. Uh, uh, carefully going through this to make sure that it comes back with the full changes that cover everything. So I'd like to hear from staff in terms of what you think, when it would be coming back to us for a new first reading.
No, this is the first, this would be the first reading. It would be a second reading.
Is that, is that true? We can cover enough tonight to say tonight would be a first reading with the change of the.
Right, yeah, it would come back for another reading on.
Okay.
Really, unless someone holds it and.
Okay.
Could we have this for the council meeting next week? Or is that too soon?
Um, no, particularly. Plus we have to publish it, um, again, with the changes three days at least before the meeting.
And what is the?
Three days before adoption, it has to be published.
What is the financial cost of that?
Five thousand dollars.
It was fifty-two hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
Can you do it for fifty-one, fifty? Leave me, leave me off of the mailing.
Give him the fifty extra. He'll cover that part.
I just, uh, I, I wanna, I'm kind of a guy that I need to know. We're doing the right thing, we're making steps and we have an outcome that we're desiring. So are we thinking it'll come back in six weeks? Or, because it's going to have to have a second reading and we have to potentially have testimony and others. So we can't just force this through in a consent. So when are we thinking we come back?
You know, I'm thinking about a month at the most. I mean, we, we need to work a month, month and a half.
Well, we've been working on it four years, so another month won't hurt. Yeah. Yeah. A closing comment before we take a.
Sure.
I just want to say that, you know, this is the pro, this is the process that I enjoy the most, believe it or not. Because you get to hear, you get to listen, we got emails, we, um. We've been looking at all angles of this and I think, um, you know, as they say, when, what's, what's the outcome of a committee? It's usually a zebra and it's, it's an animal, it's an animal that just doesn't, it doesn't run fast and doesn't look pretty. But hey, this is part of the, the process of, of local governments with local input. With a citizens committee that contributed greatly. Lots of turns, lots of twists, lots of different input. But I think we're all after the same thing, which is to protect the quality of our life from visual. As well as interference. And so we're all after the same thing. Um, the process takes lots of twists and turns and I'm going to support the motion because I think it's the right thing. And we know we have to be braced for six months, a year. A court decision, the FCC, the Supreme Court, appeals court will be back here as Alan has said. Twi- twisting and tweaking this again, because that's the nature of the, of the business of the industry. So the precedent of the cases, um, as it goes forward. Will drive us to have to modify this again. So it's not for all and forever. But it's a good start to finalize and update our ordinance. So pleased to be a part of it. It's not painful. It's just a marvelous experience. It gives us a good outcome.
Anybody? Do you want to jump in, G? Yeah, okay. Kim, no, you're good. Okay.
Um, so I started off my statement earlier by saying that I, I wanted to acknowledge the, the public. Who, uh, was present and, and who had presented legitimate concerns. Um, at the end of the day, we all need to, you know, make a decision in terms of which way. We're gonna lean, um, great arguments and, and along the same lines of what. Uh, council member Smith just shared. Um, this is also my favorite part of interacting with the public. In that, and, and I'm not proud, uh, I'm, I don't have that pride or rather, I'm not. Proud, uh, I'm not too proud to say that if I'm, you know, leading in. Uh, a direction where the public is not really feeling. Um, that we should all had, then I'm okay with, you know. Re, redirecting that conversation and, and I appreciate. And I truly do appreciate everyone who did share a comment tonight, either in public or virtually. Because like it's being said here, you know, this is really where the, uh, uh, the decisions are made with the conversation. So thank you so much, Mayor, for, um, presenting the, uh, the new, uh, option. And, uh, I can go ahead and support that as well.
Okay, um, I, I just want to say, appreciate everybody being respectful tonight. I know this is a very tough issue. And, you know, frankly, I, you know, I wish that there was more that we can do to work with you all. But I think to the extent that we can, we're trying to find that way of, of working to the middle. So I appreciate you all. Doing this work and being active on an issue that, that's important to you. And we need to continue this in, in, in other spaces. So I think with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Council member Barber?
Yeah, and this is on the new motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Garcia?
Yes.
Council member Hoppa?
Hi.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me. Um, i- i- so is it going to be on the consent, uh, agenda for that council meeting whenever it comes back?
Yeah, in a month or so, right? We'll do our best to get it on fast.
Okay, and, and so that doesn't mean it can't be pulled, but if, if it does get pulled. I'll just share that I know that there's a lot of things coming up on our agenda. And so not to say that we don't want to cut. Take time away from getting this done with the public and providing that comment, but just know in advance that I will likely. Limit public comment to a certain extent so that we can focus on the other tasks that we're, we're charged with taking care of. So just as a heads up, I don't want to keep, catch you guys off guard. All right, with that.
Final comment.
Yes.
Thank you to the subcommittee, to those that came tonight, came two weeks ago. Um, thank you for your engagement because local government only works when you're involved and you're engaged. And we have the best town in all of America because of you. Thank you.
Okay, well said. And on to the next item, which is council comments. So we didn't do council comments on Tuesday. Was that last week or? I, I can't, I really can't. All right, so from, yeah, so we didn't give council comments last week. So if anybody has council comments.
Said enough.
Okay. City manager reports. Okay, wow, I think this is a first where none of us talk. All right, with that, the council meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.